Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to call the Senate Council's Board. Don, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Meg Ryan Chalky?
Here.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Mary Belbeer?
Here.
Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Sue Groddick?
Here.
Ron Benkirk?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This time we'll turn over to Councilwoman Sue Groddick for the opening.
Thank you. As you know, Thursday is Veterans Day, so I would just like to take a moment to pause, to thank all of our veterans, their families, and active service, active duty servicemen and women for their commitment, for protecting the ideals for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Groddick, and thank you to our veterans as well. First item on our agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting dated October the 25th. Are there any comments or questions on those?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I just think the resident who spoke in the public session, I think the name is spelled with an S, not a Z. And if we approve as amended?
Second.
To approve minutes as amended, Meg Ryan Chalky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Belbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Benkirk?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. There's no one this evening. We'll now have the reports of the various committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We meet at 6:15 prior to the start of our committee, the whole meeting, on regularly scheduled council meetings. There are two notifications that council received this evening, the first of which is a $1,000 donation from Triad Engineering, and that's for the Thanksgiving program and the Recreation Department holiday event. And then another donation of 75 John Eagle gift cards, the amount of $20 each, from 188 Ohio Comp, again, for the Thanksgiving program, and the various programs at the discretion of the city. So we thank both Triad Engineering and 188 Ohio Comp for their generosity. Ordinance 2021-27 is on third reading this evening. We will need to amend it. Council had a budget work session last Monday, November the 1st, and we discussed some of these items further. We ended up removing a few items off of that capital improvement plan, so the new amount anticipated to spend next year in a capital improvements is $5,096,497. Then ordinance is 2021-31. In 2021-32, Mr. Rowan, at the last council meeting, discussed these at length. These are both TIF financing ordinances in regards to the construction at the Amazon facility and also the skilled nursing facility. And that financing will allow for us to do various projects in regards to improving that area in lieu of taxes, and we discussed that again at length at our last meeting. Additionally, ordinance 2021-29, this is the new dental insurance coverage for the city from Delta Dental for January 1st, 2022, through the end of next year, December 31st, and it is a 5% decrease from the previous year. The total premium is about $105,000, and after employees pay in their portions, about $90,000 to the city. Then ordinance 2021-36, this is determining the percentages of grocery receipts from the municipal income tax being deposited into the general capital improvement and capital reserve funds. That's on first reading. Ordinance 2021-33, this is the appropriation changes for this current fiscal year, 2021, and there are various changes that are listed out on Board Docs. There's quite a few of them, and the public is welcome to go on Board Docs and review those. The largest one, of course, is the $26 million that anticipated spending for the new city center and police station project. And again, that's on first reading. Ordinance 2021-34, this is the appropriations for the, for current and other expenditures for next year. And again, there's a lot of information out there on Board Docs, and so I would encourage the public to go out there and to review those. Mission Review will highlight some of these when he gives his report a bit later. And lastly, is ordinance 2021-35, and this amends our current ordinance 2020-48 that provides for the compensation for all part-time, full-time administrative employees that are not part of a bargaining agreement. We had a study that was done, I think it was completed, was it completed earlier this year?
Completed in October.
October of this year, very good. And that averaged several cities that are similar to ours in the area and compared compensation for the various non-bargaining employees. And this ordinance tonight, thankfully, the city of Brooklyn was almost spot on in almost all of them, but there were some adjustments that would need to be made, and so this ordinance allows for that fluctuation in those, in those various payroll packages for those employees. And that is all we discussed in Finance this evening. Again, it takes place at 6:15 prior to all regularly scheduled council meetings. With that, we'll move on with our Recreation Board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on November 15th, Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 PM. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Next up is the Planning Commission, Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
Thank you. Planning Commission met on Wednesday, November 3rd, and considered several items. First, we approved a request from Letters Graphics for an illuminated channel letter sign for Hibbett Sports at 4776 Ridge Road. We deferred an item for a request for, from Elet Signs for an illuminated channel letter sign for Five Guys at 4824 Ridge Road. We approved a request from Wagner Signs for a wall sign for MMI Textiles at One American Ridge Road, or One American Road. We approved contingent on approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a request for a Universal Sign System, a wall sign for GFS at 10820 Brook Park Road. We approved the conditional use for a religious facility in a retail business district for Bethany Assembly of God at 4630 Ridge Road. You'll hear more about that on our council agenda. And we postponed a conditional review for Cleveland American LLC and Holdings Cleveland American LLC until they are one year of at occupancy. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Groddick. The Board of Zoning Appeals will hold their next meeting on Thursday, November the 18th, at 6:00 PM, and that'll take place right here in council chambers. There are two items on the agenda, the first of which is a request from Michelle Rivera for a variance of five feet, the required five foot from the rear lot line for accessory structure at 7412 Del Bank. And the other is the one that Mrs. Groddick just referred to, and that's a request from Universal Side System for the variance for additional wall sign at GFS. And of course, that's located right there on Brook Park Road. And again, that meeting takes place on Thursday, November the 18th, right here in council chambers. And then our last committee was the Committee of the Whole, and that means following the Finance Committee right before our council meeting. There were two items that were discussed, the first of which was Resolution 2021-37. This would extend a moratorium that's currently in place in the city, and that is for the moratorium for granting building permits for any building structure or use or change that would enable the construction of storage units or self-service facilities. And the reasoning for this is because we're in the process of rewriting our zoning code right now, and so we wanted to, these have been popping up all over the area, and so we wanted to put a moratorium on any additional facilities in the city until that zoning code is rewritten, making sure those are going, and the new ones are going in the appropriate places. And then lastly, was a discussion on the firing range. As the residents know, the city is currently in construction for the city center project and the police station. There was an alternate that was discussed early on in this process, and that was for a firing range. And so we had Bowen and Jason Naudie here, our construction, construction team here, to discuss that firing range. There was, we had, we discussed this at the budget work session. There was some additional information given to council this evening, and we have decided as a council to not move forward with that at this time, largely to do because of the expenses of it. As we discussed at the last council meeting, the project itself is already about $2.5 million over budget due to the drastic increase in construction materials. Adding on this facility, as we had potentially planned to do, it was going to cost about another $820,000 to fully retrofit with the firing range, everything included. It was going to be close to $1.7 million. So the decision was made to place this as a capital item in future years, going down the road, if it is indeed something that council decides to do. And of course, that took place at the Committee of the Whole. Again, those meetings, that meeting does take place prior to all council meetings right here in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend. That concludes our reports of our committees. We'll now move on to reports of council. We'll start this evening, Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Keith Brooklyn-Geriloff is working with Mr. Hare, Brooklyn High School's principal, on some projects where ours towards graduation requirements can be fulfilled. On November 6th, this past Saturday, we were supposed to have students out raking for leaves, for, leaves for seniors in the Brooklyn community. There were eight up residents signed up for this. The leaves haven't been falling as fast this year as they anticipated, so November 6th has now been moved to Saturday, November 20th. And there's also the possibility with staffing and what's going on at schools, that it could be that following Monday and Tuesday, the 22nd and the 23rd. So if you see, if you're a senior and still would like to sign up, please contact Karen or Kathy at Senior Center at 216-635-4222, and you'll see some students coming out and raking leaves for you. On the lighter side of things, judges were out and about on Friday, October 29th, to take pictures of homes decorated for Halloween for the annual decorating contest. Top four winners, in no specific order, were 10105 Manoa Avenue, 6223 Traymore, 9010 Ansonia, and 4643 Winter Lane. There were many other Halloween festive displays throughout the city. A few of them are Delora Avenue by Pelham, Rockland, Newbury, Norcliff, and Barold, to name a few. In the next meeting or two, we'll let you know details about the Christmas decorating contest. On another happy note, NOAC, the Northern Ohio Chamber of Commerce, held the annual Bright Star Awards ceremony this year at, on Thursday, October 28th, at Signature Solon. This year's Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce nominee and recipient is Mrs. Suzie Marquess from the Brooklyn City School District. Suzie initiated a program several years ago, Brooklyn Cares, to help families in need. She sponsors Adopt a Book Bank, where families receive school supplies. During the holidays, she also sponsors Adopt a Family to help families with gifts and food. She is involved with Safe Routes to School Program, that also yearly has the Bike Rodeo and Touch a Truck event. For a person that does not even live in this town, she takes all of this seriously into heart, which is great to see. Thank you, Suzie, for all you have done, and congratulations. November 2nd, this past Tuesday, was a chilly day with the weather. It was also election day. The voter turnout was small. To all of you that voted either by mail or in person, thank you for taking the time to do so. And we're also finally getting to with LED lights, which is like my little pet project. We had a meeting on Thursday, October 28th. In the meeting, by teleconference, were individuals from the design team from Real Term Energy, also Carrie Wilson from the city. There was Tom Regus, the Finance Director, Scott Milkie. We had a demonstration on the 28th of dimmed lights in two specific areas that met the chief's approval. So on the meeting that we had this past Thursday, we discussed where lights could be actually added to make things brighter, where there were excess lights. We also talked about the dimming of lights in certain areas. What's going to happen is the design phase is being done right now. We should get it back from Real Term Energy in two weeks for our review, and once that is done, then we'll pass it on to First Energy to get the LED project finalized throughout the city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Last Monday evening, we had a budget meeting, our final one of the year, and this was for the 2022 fiscal year. And I'd like to thank Mr. Regus for his thorough presentation. It was a very good meeting. And just for the record, I do support the firing range. I think this is an important tool that our officers need. And while we're not moving forward right now with it, I do want to make sure that we revise our five-year capital plan so that we do get it in there, and it's not something that just falls by the wayside. I'd like to thank the residents for their support in my reelection, and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to serve our community for another term. And I'd also like to thank the residents for all their kindness and encouragement as I went door to door. As Mr. Selhertz mentioned, the voter turnout was pretty low and disappointing for Brooklyn because normally we do a lot better. And I certainly understand that many are turned off by the current political landscape, but in many areas, local government is really the level of government that really touches so many things in our daily lives. And it's, for many people, it's the closest form of government that you experience. So hopefully, in the next election, we'll have a lot better showing. And I please take the time this week to reach out and thank a veteran. We all owe them and their families a debt of gratitude for their service. And I too would like to congratulate Suzie Marquess. We've worked together a very long time on Safe Routes to School, and she is truly committed to the children and families in our community. And when it's time for the directors or the mayor's report, could either Chief Milkie or mayor, if you could just give a brief explanation of the NOAC project, Ridge Road. I know that people are complaining a lot about the Ridge Road traffic, and I just think it would be worth mentioning it again, what the project is and where we are. I'd appreciate that. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Belbeer.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the candidates on their victories last week in the election. Congratulations to all. I'd just like to mention a few things concerning the Brooklyn schools. The school board last week had an opportunity to visit with Polaris, and they were truly amazed at all the wonderful opportunities that our students are offered there. So they were, you know, completely just amazed and just thought it was a fabulous opportunity for our students, and so many students that do partake in the classes and the courses there truly go on to wonderful careers. Brooklyn High School will also be hosting the Padua and Holy Name Playoff Games at the stadium. I'm not sure if it's this weekend or coming up. The Brooklyn High School principal recently had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day program last Friday. The principal was able to hand out thank you letters to all our vets from Brooklyn High School students. They were very appreciative to have the opportunity to give back to our vets. And also, this Thursday being Veterans Day, our city buildings, as everyone knows, will be closed, and Garbage Day will, of course, be one day late. And I personally like to recognize all our veterans in our city and just veterans in nature. I really appreciate their dedication and their service to our country. And it's so nice to see now so many people thanking veterans for their service and truly appreciating them. Because maybe you remember, or maybe you don't, but years ago, during the Vietnam era, they weren't too appreciated. Nowadays, it's nice to see that people will say, "Thank you for your service." So the vets during the Vietnam era did go through a lot. I'd also like to just mention some quick little quotes from some famous people concerning veterans. George Patton Jr., he had said that "It is foolish and wrong to mourn the men who died. Rather, we should thank God that such men lived." Claudia Pemberton, "America without her soldiers would be like God without his angels." Maya Angelou, "How important it is for us to recognize and celebrate our heroes and sheros." Charles B. Rangel, "Honoring the sacrifices many have made for our country in the name of freedom and democracy is the very foundation of Veterans Day." John Doolittle, "America's veterans have served their country with the belief that democracy and freedom are ideals to be upheld around the country." And lastly, to our men and women in uniform, past, present, and future. God bless you and thank you. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank all the residents who came out and voted in this year's election. It was nice to see many friends and families at the polls. Also, to all the absentee voters who participated in the election process by continuing to support their Brooklyn community. I would also like to congratulate Kathy Pucci and Andy Selhertz on their reelection. I want to reserve the right on the fourth vacated seat. That would be up to congratulate. That has 10 days for a recount. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Groddick.
Thank you. World Kindness Day is this Saturday, November 13th. Try to find a moment to be extra kind to someone in your life. Kindness doesn't take long or cost money, and it can make our world a little brighter. And I have to say, during November, in my classroom, we try to make it Kindness Month, and our goal is 100 acts of kindness in November. So I'm hoping that Brooklyn will have 100 acts of kindness on November 13th. I also wanted to say that I support and hope that we will see a firing range for our officers in the near future. It was a very difficult decision, but I do hesitate to spend the funds on a shell at this time without a specific plan on completing the project. And I hope when we meet again for the budget proceedings, we will have a clearer idea of when we can put that plan into our, into place. And also, on planning, and during my planning report, I mentioned that tonight council will consider confirming a conditional use for Bethany Assembly of God for the vacant building at the corner of Ridge and Bed Off. As a member of the Planning Commission, I was very impressed with their presentation and their commitment to being a caring neighbor. And I say that they really look forward to being part of our community, and I hope council will confirm that conditional use tonight. And lastly, I would also like to congratulate Suzie Marquess for receiving the Bright Star Award. This award is well-deserved recognition from somebody I am very proud to call a colleague and a friend. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Ryan Chalky.
Thanks once again to Director Regus for another informative budget session. I cannot say enough how valuable these sessions are as someone who has to vote on these big budget items. I know a lot of time goes into planning them, so that time is well spent. Thank you. Congratulations to Brooklyn Hurricanes football senior Zach Haskins for being named first Team All-District as an offensive lineman this season. I also want to thank Karen and Kathy at the Senior Center for their work on the Veterans Day event that occurred last week. I thought it was a very, a very nice way to honor our veterans and thank them for their service to our country. My favorite part was the handwritten cards that the eighth graders wrote, and each veteran received, as Mrs. Belbeer had mentioned. To all of our veterans, thank you, and I wish you an official Happy Veterans Day this Thursday and every day. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan Chalky. I also want to say congratulations to Mrs. Pucci, to Mr. Tansky, and to Mr. Selhertz on their victory. And Mrs. Pucci talked about the importance of voting, and Mr. Tansky just mentioned that there will be a recount because the fourth seat, Mr. Varowski, currently is ahead of Mr. Coyle by 13 votes after Election Day. So it was 8:25 to 8:12. And so that's 13 people, that's fewer people that are sitting in this room tonight. And so it is important that people get out and vote, and we have to wait until the 12th for all the mail-in ballots to have time to arrive, and then the election won't be certified until the 22nd, I looked up today. So next election, make sure everyone gets out there and vote, and so we will have a decision, this county will have a decision by November 22nd. We just have to, we have to wait a little bit longer to see who that is. But congratulations to all those that ran, and I appreciate that. I know that it's a lot of work to do that, and it is always nice to go out and talk to the residents who have their various issues during the election campaign. I also want to second what Mrs. Groddick said about the Assembly of God church coming here. That core of that property has sat vacant for so long, and I know that we've had at least one other business that wanted to come in there that ultimately the Planning Commission decided against authorizing the conditional use. And I think that church will, I know people that go there, I think that'll be a great addition to our city, and so I look forward to voting to confirm that as well tonight. So thank you for bringing that up in your report, and I look forward to having them here in the community. Lastly, just want to talk a little about Veterans Day. The American idea that, and we are, we're an idea, has created the most prosperous and generous nation in all of human history. America has provided more opportunity for success and prosperity than any other nation in the world. The American system, our federal republic, are not perfect. It's messy at times, but what Americans on their worst day enjoy, the comforts and pleasures the most of the world can only dream of. America has our issues, we have our problems, but we do not have to look to government or someone else to fix those issues. This is the solution that most of the rest of the world does look to. Instead, we as Americans get to look at ourselves, the people who have the power and responsibility to fix them, and that's such a privilege and a blessing. So how did America become such a great place? Was it just dumb luck? Did we just happen to stumble into something that became the most prosperous nation in the world? No. We need to look no further than the cemeteries all around our country, in the world, to discover why we are so great. Our greatness comes in part from the sacrifice of people like Corporal Timothy Knight, a fellow Brooklyn resident who died on January 26th of 2005 defending our freedoms in Iraq. The selflessness of this 22-year-old young man is a stark reminder of who we are and how privileged we are to be called Americans. Hundreds of thousands of Timothy Knights have fallen since our country's founding in 1776. It is these men and women who have served and are continuing to serve around the world so that we can call America home. This week, I would challenge all of our residents to not just say thank you, you should, but not just say thank you, but do something to put those words into action. Find a veteran, buy them lunch, write them a nice note, just give them a smile and a kind word. We are a greatly divided people, but at the end of the day, we're all Americans, and that is one of the greatest privileges in the world. It is good to be reminded of that privilege, and it would have been lost a long time ago had it not been for our men and women in uniform. From the bottom of my heart, I say thank you for defending our God-given freedoms, and I do pray that my life and the lives of my family members live up to the price that so many pay so that we can be free. I truly say Happy Veterans Day, and God bless our veterans for all that they do. That concludes my report. I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Ron. I as well would like to say thank you to our veterans. I'd also like to say thank you to Karen Brado and Kathy Missari, who planned the pinning for our veterans last Friday. Along with them, I'd like to say thank you to the hospice of the Western Reserve, who provided the pins, Chief Kevin Paul, and all the firefighters who were there to help. Brooklyn High School Principal Brian Hare, who is already mentioned, provided letters from the students. Pastor Michael Strange, who is the pastor from Bethany Assembly that are on for conditional use. He opened it up with three beautiful songs. American Legion Post 469, who were there for the gun salute, and then Walmart, who provided all the food. So thank you, everyone who attended, and thank you those who participate to honor our veterans here in Brooklyn. I sent a couple emails to council, and we put it on social media and website. Ohio Consumer, consumers made a settlement with First Energy for about $306 million. This includes no pet customers, which is the majority of Brooklyn if you did not opt out. With that settlement, consumers will be seeing credits in their bill over the next four years, somewhere between $0.58 and $1.87 per month. Also, there are a couple additional credits, one-time credits, somewhere between $86 and $1,000. $100 if you fall into certain categories. So all those fact sheets are provided on the city's website. You can learn a little bit about that there. As well as another thing that we had posted is Cleveland Water Department is looking for some customers that would be willing to do lead and copper compliance monitoring in their homes. So this is a quarterly thing. What you do is they'll give you a call, they'll walk you through this, and you actually get credits for your bills. So all that information's on the website if you're interested in helping them collect that data. There's a lot of money that is coming down right now from the federal government with the infrastructure bill. And, you know, the hope is to correct issues where there are older communities, their lead problems. And the more data that they have, the better off we're going to be as a region to collect some of those infrastructure dollars. So, you know, I am on the water cog and I would say there's no data from the ZIP code 44144. So I'm really trying to drive home and get a couple residents willing to take a little of their time for a credit. And then, as Mrs. Pucci requested, the Noaka Stop, which is the signalization, timing, optimization program. Noaka has already been out to Brooklyn and they have done the timing along Ridge Road. They are putting together their data. It will go to their board in May and then right after that it will be implemented. So we're looking at probably summer of next year where we'll see the signal change. And I keep warning everyone that it's just in time for construction of Ridge Road from Flowerdale to Pearl. So yes, I see better outcomes in the future, but construction is going to happen, so it's going to take a little bit of time because that's going to hold things up as well. And then the last thing I have is I have a proclamation for Gary Suttermeyer. And I'd like to read it. Gary was not able to attend tonight, so that's why we didn't separate it out, but Gary began his career as an auxiliary police officer in 1970 and he will retire after 51 years of service. Whereas in 1972, Gary attended the police academy and became a special officer. Gary was promoted to captain of the auxiliary unit organizing trainings and schedules for the unit. Gary worked thousands of hours at private security details, directing traffic, and store patrol, and thousands of hours for the city during storms, traffic control, special events, mayor's court, and park patrol. Gary planned, organized, and participated in Police Auxiliary Santa's Visit in Brooklyn every year since working in the city, serving as Santa Claus in his life for over 36 years. Gary also donated hundreds of hours appearing as Santa Claus to anyone that asked during the holiday season. Gary represented the city and the Brooklyn Police Department with pride and professionalism. So I, the mayor, on behalf of city council and the city, do hereby recognize and congratulate him on 51 years of fantastic service to our community. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief Milkie, who would like to say a few words as well.
So I don't know how many people actually know who Gary is, but you've probably run across him at some point if you've lived in the city for any length of time. Gary worked a lot of giant eagles and Santa's Club, security details, countless bingos. He stood out in the rainforest and guarded down power lines. Anytime you called Gary, he always said yes. He volunteered many times for the city. He's going to be dearly missed for 50 years. The mayor asked me to tell the story about how he got hired here and just to put it in perspective, it was before I was even born. But he had moved from Park to Brooklyn and came to City Hall to figure out how to pay his taxes. And the police chief at the time saw him, and Gary's a very tall man, and asked him, hey, you're a big guy, you want to join the auxiliary unit? And Gary, yeah, I guess, it sounds all right. And little did he know what he was joining at the time. So Gary's kind of fallen on some health problems lately and I've had conversations with him over the last few weeks. And this is a hard decision for him to come to because he's been such an integral part of our police department. Just imagine the Santa's Visit every year, 30, it's been going on and Mr. Parker came back up well long before anybody in this room was around. And Gary sat in the sleigh as Santa Claus in rain and snow for 36 years as Santa Claus. He was the guy that handed the candy candies out. He was the guy that made sure we had candy candies. He ordered them in July to make sure we had them in December. People planned their holiday parties around Santa's Visit and Gary afterwards would jump out of the sleigh, jump in his own car, and attend some of these parties with the folks that he knew, just as Santa Claus, not as anybody else, as Santa Claus. He provided Santa Claus to our FOP lodge for countless years. He used to tell stories about how current police officers sat on his lap as children as Santa Claus. So Gary will be sorely, sorely missed in our police department and already is. And here's the best part, Gary had another career. He was a mailman. He was a mailman all those years and retired in the mid-'90s. He did this as an extra side gig. So I can't understate or overstate how important he was to the city of Brooklyn and particularly to a lot of little kids out there. So thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. I think he's out here, we should give a round of applause. Falls with. We don't have any reports of directors on my document for this evening. Do the directors need to add anything before we move on with legislation?
No.
Okay. All right, well, we're going to move on with our agenda then. Now, we do have two notifications. I mentioned them in the Finance Committee report, one for a $1,000 donation from Tried Engineering for our Thanksgiving program and Recreation Department holiday event, Christmas event. And number two, the second one, is a $75 giant eagle gift card, the amount of $20 each from 188 Ohio Comp for the Thanksgiving program. So thank you to both of those businesses for being so generous. Next on our list is a council confirmation for the conditional use approval for a religious facility in a retail business district. We do have representative here this evening that has some pictures that'll be on display, I believe, in the lobby or somewhere when this is over, if council wants to take a look at those. The pictures, yeah, the pictures are also on Board Docs if people want to take a look at those as well. So I'll make a motion that we confirm.
Second.
To confirm conditional use, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes. And once again, we're glad to have you as part of the Brooklyn community, looking forward to seeing you get that into a church facility down there. I'll come visit you guys sometime, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We do have five different appointment confirmations this evening for council. The first one is a council confirmation for the reappointment of Ron Campbell to the Fair Housing Review Board for a three-year term ending December 31st of 2024.
Move to confirm Mr. Campbell to the Fair Housing Review Board.
Second.
To confirm Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for your continued service. Next is a council confirmation, the appointment of Nick Morales to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term expiring December 31st of 2026. I'll make a motion that council confirm Mr. Morales to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
To confirm Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, for your willingness to serve in that capacity. Next is the council confirmation for the reappointment of Craig Farquhar to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term expiring December 31st of '26. I'll make that motion that council confirm.
Second.
To confirm Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve, continue to serve in that capacity as well. Next is the council confirmation for the reappointment of Earl Blom to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term expiring December 31st, '26.
Move to confirm Mr. Blom to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
To confirm Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for your continued service. Appreciate it. For legislation this evening, ordinance 2021-27 is authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2022. The new amount that's been adjusted since the last meeting is now $5,096,497. We have removed an ATB, a thermal imager, and we split the I-480 Tideman project to be done over two years. So that's an adjustment from $1.16 million to $530,000. So I will make a motion that we amend as stated.
Second. To amend as stated, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules as amended?
Second.
Suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
And then to adopt, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
I apologize, these next two ordinances, I like the titles, but they need to be right on the record. Ordinance 2021-31 is on second reading, declaring the improvement of certain real property to be of public purpose pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40B, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, designated a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, and authorizing compensation payments to the Brooklyn City School District and Polaris Career Center Joint Vocational School District and declaring emergency. And all of that is, we talked about earlier, that's the TIF financing for the skilled nursing facility. That's on second reading. And then a sister ordinance, 2021-32, declaring the improvement of certain real property to be of public purpose pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5709.40B, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, designated a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, and authorizing compensation payments to the Brooklyn City School District and Polaris Career Center Joint Vocational School District and declaring emergency. And this particular ordinance deals with the Amazon facility on Memphis Avenue. New business exceeding the first item is Resolution 2021-37 is on first reading, extending a moratorium imposed by Resolution 2020-10 and 2021-13 on the granting of building permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the construction of storage units or self-service storage facilities for a period not to exceed 100 days and declaring emergency. Ordinance 2021-29 is on first reading but hoped to pass by suspension of the rules due to a timing issue, accepting the dental insurance coverage from Delta Dental for eligible employees from January 1st to December 31st of 2022 and declaring emergency.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules.
Seven. Suspend the rules, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adopt, Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
These last four items are on first reading this evening. Ordinance 2021-36, determining the percentages of gross receipts from the Brooklyn Municipal Income Tax to be deposited into the General Capital Improvement and Capital Reserve Fund. Ordinance 2021-33, amending ordinance 2020-47 entitled in ordinance to make appropriations for current and other expenditures in the city of Brooklyn, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st to December 31st, 2021 and declaring emergency. Ordinance 2021-34, to make appropriations for current and other expenditures in the city of Brooklyn, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st to December 31st, 2022, excuse me, and declaring emergency. And lastly, ordinance 2021-35, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2020-48, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employee non-bargain agreement of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. There's a lot of information in those last four ordinances in regards to appropriations for this year and for next year, so I would encourage residents to go to the city's website, go on Board Docs. You can read all the documentation. As was mentioned several times, Mr. Regus has presented that information very well to council. It's in very understandable format on there for residents to take a look at. So it's your money, that's being spent, so we'd encourage you to take some time to go and look at that. That is all that we have on our agenda this evening. Does any, the mayor, council directors, anything they'd like to add? Go ahead, mayor.